... invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
God, our Divine Spirit, we ask you to come down with all your blessings and grant our city council the wisdom, the ability, the knowledge to make the right decisions for our city. We ask that you bless all of our city, our council, our city workers. We ask that you bless our country. For this we are thankful. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clear justice for all.
Row call. Who am I calling? Sal or Jack?
Mayor Dale Massett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terrence Rowe.
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorel.
Here.
Councilman William Ditmer.
Here.
Councilman Richard Blum.
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew.
Here.
City Manager Vincent Lupo.
Here.
Okay. We have approval of the council minutes. Any motions?
Motion to approve the minutes. Second.
The motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. General public, looks like Thomas Brown.
Thomas Brown, 7436 Candlelight Court. A document filed and recorded with Pasco County gives the public use of all streets and public easements in the Candlelight Homes subdivision. The key words within this document are "use of." A fence cannot be erected across a street or public easement. That would constitute a violation of the guarantee for the public to use the streets and public easements. In a letter to Port Ritchie Code Enforcement, I made them aware of City Ordinance 05536-F4, part of what reads, and I quote, "No fence may be allowed in an easement recorded for ingress/egress access purposes," unquote. The public was given use of the streets and easements. Therefore, they must have ingress and egress rights to enable them to use the streets and easements. I made code enforcement aware of the two five-foot sections of fence behind 7447 Candlelight Court that deny the public access to the guaranteed use of the easement at that location. In this letter of July 16, I asked code enforcement, when will code enforcement issue a 14-day courtesy warning letter to the resident at 7447 Candlelight Court informing them of the code violation? It has been three weeks and I have not received a reply. Also on July 16, I sent a letter to City Attorney Matthew with copies going to Mayor Massett and Councilman Blum. I included all the information that I had sent to code enforcement. I closed with, "I am asking you to take action that will result in giving the public the ability to use the streets and easements depicted in Plat book 18, pages 59 and 60." I used capital letters for the word "use" to stress its importance. It has been three weeks and I have not received a reply. P.S. The city has violated its own code, which limits the size of no trespassing signs to two square feet in sign surface area. I realize the Candlelight subdivision is in a blighted area of the city. I wish the city had not put up the unwarranted fence with the huge no trespassing sign on it. It makes my neighborhood appear to be a high-prime area. This is two square feet. The sign on the fence is much larger than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak? Mrs. Gray.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Phyllis Gray, San Bevel. I wanted to draw attention to council tonight that there is on the webpage, the Port Ritchie, City of Port Ritchie webpage, it says Pasco's Gateway to the Gulf. We are not Pasco's Gateway to the Gulf. We are our gateway to the Gulf. And we sat, I was on the board, the committee, I don't know whether we were board or committee, I believe Sandy and Judy Parisi, Donna True, may she rest in peace, and as a matter of fact, Chief Brown was the chief at the time, and he just sat. We were all over here and he just sat, you know, and we were kicking everything around and we came up with our gateway to the Gulf. And we approved it. We, of course, came to council. Mayor, you were here, and I remember, and we explained why we wanted it, because it's our city, it's our gateway to the Gulf. And so it got approved by council. And now you go on the webpage, it says Pasco's Gateway to the Gulf. So I spoke today, spoke with Jocelyn, I speak with you, no, I spoke with Fran, spoke with Fran, and then she was talking to Jocelyn and Jocelyn was going to talk to Erin, and somehow this was going to be corrected. I hope so, because we are who we are and I like to have our identity protected.
I have a little bit of screen because originally I had said Pasco's Gateway to the Gulf more politically than, and the truth of it is, if you draw Pasco out, we're it. And it says something about us, but I will make sure that, I mean, Jocelyn will take care of that, I'm sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It's nice to see you here.
Thank you. Good to be here.
We're on there. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it to the city manager, who I'm glad is well, if I had buried you.
Thank you, sir. There are several issues I'd like to speak to very quickly. The very first one is there is a, our federal elections will be on August 28, and there'll be elections held in this building. So consequently, our general, our regular council meeting will be held on the next day, which will be the 29th. So please note that-
Make one.
Pardon?
Is there a 29th?
The 29th of August. It will be on the 29th of August.
Back in April.
So please make note of that. We'll make sure it's on our website so that the general public knows. But elections will be held here in this building on the 28th, and our regular meeting will be held on the 29th. I would also like to distribute for council, and it will be on the website, is the general tentative budget timetable of workshops and efforts. This series of meetings will eventually culminate in an eventual improvement, approval of, we hope, of our budget so that we can move forward with the next coming fiscal year. And this is, of course, after all of the public hearings and the meetings and the discussions brought to council for council's consideration. At the last meeting, one of the residents had asked that we provide a update on our water production, on our water analysis, what we were attempting to achieve, what cost savings we had managed to achieve. And to that end, you'll see it, the attachment, the very first page is the numeric history of what the city purchased. And I'll just take us from the fiscal years 1213, we purchased $366,941 for water. The fiscal year 1314, we purchased $435,708.50 of water purchases. The fiscal year 1415, we purchased $392,419.50 water. Fiscal year 1516, we purchased $410,383.74. In 1617, after we began to make significant repairs to our systems, we only purchased $172,246.70. And this year, fiscal year, which has not completely ended yet, year 1718, to date, we have only purchased $8,839.51 in water purchases.
I'm going to have to give you one for that.
This is essentially what that graph looks like for everyone. But what this really means is that council was, council listened to these numbers last year when we brought them to council, and council absolutely concurred in that there was absolutely no necessity in raising the rates another four or five percent, water rates. So council froze those rates at that time. And at this time, it remains the same amount that you've paid regularly. I'll be coming to council again with this year's budget and we'll have further considerations. Understand that in year 1516, we budgeted $505,000 for water purchases. And last year, we budgeted $405,000 for water purchase, but only spent 43% of that. This year, knowing what we were doing and what we were purchasing, we only budgeted $150,000 towards purchase of water. We've only spent approximately 6% of that money. So what it really means is that our water production, our water distribution facilities, and our entire operation is working to the point where we'll be able to save additional money so that we can finally reserve some funds for future occurrences with our water acquisition/distribution system. And hopefully, council will then allow us to reserve some of those funds, but at the same time, keep our water bills as reasonable as possible and perhaps even lower them. I will remind you that we have several new projects onboard, so we are very careful about what our production levels are and what our long-term sustainability is. So we keep that in mind. But to date, we seem to be doing rather well. Most recently, our fire department was awarded a post-fire on-scene decontamination kits from the Florida State Fire Marshal. These kits will be used to decontaminate firefighters on scenes from carcinogens after a fire. The program was intended to assist in mitigating firefighters' exposure to hazardous cancers-causing products of combustion, thus protecting the health and safety of each firefighter. These kits were at no cost to the city and were awarded from a million-dollar grant allocated from the Florida Legislature and the Florida State Marshal and the Comprehensive Cancer Center. So we received those packets. They are now installed with our fire department to help protect our fire department. And this was through a grant at no cost to the city. As is generally requested by Councilwoman Sorel and other council people, here is an update on the various projects that are ongoing with the city. Pass them out. Essentially, we have the projects broken down to six different sections. And the administration department, the Restore Acts, dredging of Channels 1, 1826A, will, we expect to begin in 2019. We are in the process of, and have completed, some DEP requirements. There are still some of them that are ongoing, but just about to be completed, and I'll speak to that a few minutes later. We have upcoming rate studies, our utility rates and building fees. This is critical, because we do charge incoming operations, such as Avila Bay, Snuff Cove, and some of the others, with impact fees so that we can offset the burden to the existing customers on our line and to the city itself. So we'll be doing rate analysis. With respect to Orange Grove, the county is in the process of working their budget the same way as we are working our budget. But after negotiating with the county administrator and his staff, after consultation with Councilman Rowe and several other council people, we are to the point now where the county is in the process of completing or practically has already completed the engineering necessary to do Orange Grove. So it's just a matter of working out the final statistics in their budget, in our budget, and then eventually coming to council to work out the transfer of property. So we hope to have Orange Grove finally, once and for all, completely repaired in the very, very near future. Been a long-suffering issue for the people in Candlelight. We are in the process of doing recodification of our city codes, and we increased use, we are still increasing the use of our NEXAL system, which has been working out quite well, by the way. You'll hear later on a report from our building department, but in a quick overview, there are major renovations that are ongoing at Walmart. We have just received notification of the acceptance, final acceptance of our beautification of the US-19 median from FDOT. In fact, that was transmitted to us today. So they finally accepted all the work and the plans that we've been going through. The building department has been putting together. I'm sure Building Department, Mr. Hughes will be speaking to that issue. We have before you the final reading of the housing development plan, the codes from the code plan. We're in the process of developing CRA Residential Maintenance Grant Program. That program, for all practical purposes, is the companion to the code enforcement operation that will be occurring, so that when someone comes to you with a code issue, you may be eligible for participation in this CRA grant program. Council was clear in their delineation that 50% of these grants will be below the median income and the 50% above it. This is a $1,000 matching grant program. We have, over in the building department, several major projects on Avila, the Avila Bay development, which is ongoing. You might see some of the work that's outgoing. We have upcoming meetings and have had meetings with the Snuff Code Project. We have upcoming meeting with the Carra Bay Project, which is another project close to the Avila Bay development. Our utilities department, and Mr. Hughes will be speaking to you about that in his report, has been doing, as you drive through the city, yeoman's work with their departments in cleaning out the swales as best as possible to prepare, keep us ready for this hurricane system. We have continued to, as I've spoken earlier, decrease reliance on bulk water purchases. We've improved our water recovery operation, which is absolutely essential. It's part and parcel of how we're able to reduce our dependency on purchased water and also reduce our dependency on us producing our own water. It is simply the reuse of filtered water through a regenerated and refurbished iron removal process. Utilities department is very proud of that function. We have purchased the Utility Modular Office. It is completed, is up. Our people can now utilize that facility as it was purposely designed for. And we're in the process of upgrades to our meter reading program, and we'll be coming to council very shortly with the discussion of census. Our fire department and Captain Koch will be speaking to that very shortly. We're still undergoing repairs to our Engine 42. We have, we're still discussing the upcoming potential acquisition of the Fire Police Response Vessel, which becomes more interesting based on the recent tragedy out in the, and the water is not too long ago. They've completed some water rescue training and wildland fire training. Our police department, we've, has been updated with two new patrol cars that were approved and purchased this year and will be online. We've updated some weapons, updating and ongoing training for our people. We're working with collaboration with Pasco County on drug activity, which is so important to our community. Even though we have a small community, we do have a drug problem, and our police are on it as best they possibly can. We tie in with our sister city, Newport Ritchie, and with the county, and wherever necessary with federal agents. We have an ongoing operation. Of course, we have been fortunate enough to work out the acquisition of two patrol cars from the former Brooksville Police Department at an extremely reduced cost, which will also augment our fleet. Our Public Works Department, our FORDAP improvements, the waterfront parks are ongoing. You'll see that the kayak ramp is almost complete out there now. We're improving Brasher Park. The rehabilitation of Nick's Park Boat Ramp is underway, will be shortly. Their new side locks installations are ongoing, new street installations. We're still discussing, and we're doing the initial prep work. And the repairs to the stormwater and drainage system is still ongoing. That's basically a basic update to the various projects for our city.
I'll bring it to council. Thoughts?
Is he done?
No, I have some other-
I thought you just said you-
I'm sorry. I couldn't talk to last meeting, but I'm going to make up for it this one. I'm sorry. I have an additional item, which is of quite a bit of interest to our community. I'm sure each council person has been getting their share of calls. And this is our boards and committees. This is the list of our boards and committee members, what's entailed, what's entitled. And I would, I would request that council take this document back, look it over, think over who best they believe might fit, and would reach out to these individuals. And at our upcoming meeting, when this issue comes back, to make the selections wherever possible to fill some of the vacancies, so that we can begin to pick up some of these committees and bring them back into the sunshine and help have input to both the administration and our city government. With respect to the waterfront park and the dog issue, we have, in fact, been in contact with the FCT, with respect to that issue. And we are in the process of submitting a plain update required by them in order to help facilitate that possibility. And we're waiting for that response, and we'll let the public and council know as soon as we do receive that response. And depending upon what it is and what council's options are, we'll move forward. Someone made some comment about the FBI doing some investigation of some city in Florida for CRA misuse or whatever. I can assure you, it is not the city of Port Ritchie, period. I know, because I know what we're doing with the CRA funds, and I know what we're doing with the CRA budget, as does this council. And I'm already going to speak ahead of myself by saying, I'm sure the citizens and our council will be extremely pleased when we come to do our budget process with respect to the utilization of CRA funds. Oh, one other issue, and that is, I'm sure that you would, Mr. Hughes will speak to it in length, but this is the fall cleanup that we generally have. And the city of Port Ritchie plans to schedule a fall cleanup for two weeks in September, the week of the 17th and the week of the 24th. We'll be renting commercial dumpsters that will be housed in the back of the building, whereby residents will be able to drop off unwanted items between the hours of eight and four. During the second week of the cleanup, residents can call to schedule a pickup at their curbs for larger items that require heavy equipment for disposal. We, of course, will put additional information about this on our website so that we can be more specific about what's entailed in picking it up. But it is an endeavor that this council sees fit to provide to our citizens, and it's absolutely essential that it does take place. With respect to the dredging project that I alluded to earlier, Duberry has been completing the seagrass analysis, which has stopped us from moving forward on the project, because Corvengineers absolutely demanded, along with some residuals, although we've been approved by DEP. The residual counts on seagrass, that analysis couldn't even begin until June, and it runs for several months. So that is in the process. It is almost completed. And when it is completed, it'll be submitted to the Corps, and we have every belief that the Corps will approve those findings, and we'll be able to finally move forward with the dredges of 118 and 26A. And that, Mr. Mayor and City Council, as City Managers report for this.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay. Well, you just said, I had nothing to say, but I'll leave it to you first.
That means boards and committees will be on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am. No, I have, I have individual reports, and I'll take up some more of your time by each one of our departments. I think that you might want to listen to some, because there's some significant achievements out here. And I believe that our citizens are not really fully informed of what your employees, your people are doing with respect to this community and how well they're serving this community. And what I'd like to start off with is our police department. Captain Koch, if you would, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Went ahead and pulled the monthly activity report for the month of July, and I'll kind of just summarize it for you and then touch on any areas that you want a little more attention. Overall, during the month of July, the generated calls for service stayed approximately within the same range of about 11,000 to 1,200 calls. This month was 1,118 calls for service throughout the department for the entire month. Of those, the typical Part One crimes were extremely minimal. We had a combined total of three aggravated assault and battery calls, zero residential, commercial, or motor vehicle burglaries. That's a good number to have none, obviously. Commonly, you'll get one here and there, and it's an incident that you can't completely eliminate, but to have none is an improvement. Thieves, we've only had nine, seven of which were retail, two were grand thefts. We responded to 26 motor vehicle crashes, conducted over about 436 traffic stops, resulting in 16 impounds. Those impounds are typically for unregistered vehicles, operators without- Those impounds are typically for, for unregistered vehicles, operators without, without proper licensing and the nature of that. We responded to 16 alarms. Of that, we, we drew out nine drug violations. Of, of the drug violations, one, one notation that I'd like to make was Officer Zimmerman actually generated a significant drug violation that resulted from a traffic stop. The operator of that motor vehicle had in his possession over 500, over 500 grams of marijuana, approximately 37 illegal prescription medication, and $2,475 in cash money, along with some paraphernalia that indicated a disposition towards distribution of that substance. That substance is, and cash is now in, in property evidence as this proceeds through his, his court proceeding. As far as the locations around the city, the primary one that we typically look at quite a bit is Walmart. Obviously, we've, this month, we've gone down a little bit in response to that. In Walmart, we had eight thefts and 10 trespass incidents. And I would, I would also note those trespass incidents are commonly resulting from theft-related issues as well. What they'll typically do is, is they'll see somebody in the store that's previously stolen from them, or if it doesn't meet their criteria, they'll, they'll contact us and have them remove the trespassing from the property to prevent further thefts and incidents. Also, one other thing that's not in here, or that's not mentioned in here specifically, we had an occasion, I guess approximately three weeks ago, officer responded out to a call that turned out to be an attempted homicide. It was a dispute that, that occurred at one of the local bars, spilled out into the parking lot, in which case a perpetrator lacerated the throat of the victim, was transported up to Bayne Point Hospital where they had surgery. And it turned out that the, the wound was not severe enough to, to completely jeopardize the, the victim's life, but within, within an hour or two of the time of the incident, the person was in custody and the officer involved has and is still following up on, on some detailed investigation to, to make for the best presentable case to the state attorney's office for prosecution.
Captain, we have recently received, in fact, it's been ongoing for some time, complaints about speeding throughout the city. And the police department is, and will be, doing heavy enforcement of speeding within our community. And would just like to remind the citizens of that, that you live here and this is your city. And you must be mindful when you drive our, our roads and our streets, that we have visitors coming to our city. And perhaps they're not as, as aware of our street patterns and our traffic patterns. But our police will be out doing serious patrols with respect to, to speeding. And I would make, like to make sure that our citizens are well aware of that. And that'll be coming up shortly, Mike?
Yes, sir. Actually, in the days, the days to come here and probably within the next week to two, we've got a couple of operations planned to where we'll be out throughout the city. We've got about four or five different locations that are somewhat problematic over the years, where complaints from residents come in, that we're gonna, we're gonna go out and, and hit them hard at, at various times in an enforcement mindset. And then basically, probably gonna, primarily gonna be looking for speed, safety belt, and then, and then while we, while we're addressing that, any, any unlicensed, unregistered and insurance-related things. Basically, to, to get the, the people and vehicle off the roads that shouldn't be on the roads and get the people, people that are on the roads operating in a proper manner.
Thank you, Mike. Would you also please pick up on small, brief announces of the fire department, please?
Yes, sir. Like I said, I, I have the report generated by Fire Quinn. I can't give you quite the same detail, but I can run down it for you. During the month of July, the fire department ran 76 calls. The predominant amount of calls that they ran on were medical at 59. They also ran on seven motor vehicle crashes. They assisted the police department on four occasions, two calls for wires down, one call for marine water rescue, one fire alarm, one illegal burn, and one lockout. They also conducted multiple incidents of training to include wildland firefighter, surface water rescue, multi-company training with Pasco County Fire Rescue and Newport Ritchie, and fire streams and water supply. I don't know what that is, but I'll defer to them on that. In addition to, in addition to the Fourth of July celebration at, at Waterfront Park, let's see, they also completed multiple projects to include a fire station outside painting, fire pump installation of the UTV, firefighter breathing apparatuses, and they reviewed and approved building plans, which I believe for the upcoming projects in the city. One of those incidents that I can speak a little bit to that I'm familiar with, because I actually took part and assisted with, the marine water rescue. We had received a call, I believe it was middle of July, out to the south side of Derny Key, gentleman with a history of, well, I'll just say with, with a medical history, called and was complaining he wasn't feeling well and needed assistance. We were able to, to launch the patrol boat, get the firefighters onboard and respond out and, and recover that person and respond them back into shore. The feather in our own hat is a joint effort between us that I'm gonna say is, at the time that the call came out, it was actually 12 o'clock at night, and we were able to get on scene prior to any other law enforcement vessel or fire, fire emergency worker in the area. And the initial, the initial call that came out, when they called me anyway, was that they already had people on scene, we were still the first ones there.
Thank you, Mike.
Captain?
Yes, sir.
Is the bulk of the police activity monthly, does that involve traffic issues, stops, or what have you?
There's a high percentage of that, yes, sir.
Yeah. And during that period of time, is it fair to say that there are citations and tickets issued to a lot of these people who were stopped?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and I don't know if you can answer this question, I'm sure Mr. Lupo can. Out of those citations and those, the tickets that are issued, where does that money, where does that money go? Does that money come back to the city or is part of it come back to the city and some to the county? Do you know the answer to that?
It's been my understanding, and I'll defer to finance, but it's been my understanding that, that the majority of that goes to the county, but a small percentage comes back to the city. But I would, I would have to defer.
That's correct.
Okay.
The vast majority goes to the county.
Okay. So is there, is there any, is there a dollar figure that, that the police by, by issuing citations generate to the city of Port Ritchie? Do you guys, do you track that?
Yes, we do, and you'll see that in our upcoming budget. We'll have those budget numbers for you. The, the object, as you, as you know, sir, the, the object of issuing a citation is an informational effort and a corrective effort. It's not a moneymaker, that's not what we are interested in. This isn't Waldo, nor do, do we intend to move in that direction. We simply want to ensure the life safety of our citizens. And the form that has been worked out by, by state and county is what it is. We'll present those numbers, that algorithm to you, along with what the budget process is.
Yeah, and I, and I didn't imply that it was, that it was a moneymaker. It's just being new up here, I just didn't have any idea. And if it did amount to anything, and then my final question on that line is, will you, when it's time to present the budget, whatever those numbers are, will, will we find out? Will we be afforded that information as to where that money goes?
Absolutely. It's all part, part of the parcel, part of the, the budget process is outlined specifically in the police department. That's primarily where that money goes.
So is it fair to say that they don't generate enough out there to pay their salaries?
Absolutely correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Our, and that's, these reports, by the way, are as promised to council, as a request of, I believe, Councilwoman Sorrell and Councilwoman, and Ditmer. And it'll only be occurring once a month, and I'm, I'm sorry that I'm taking up the time, but I think it's essential that this report be given in the format that it is being given and the citizens can hear it. I'd like to pick up with Mr. Hughes, sir?
All right, good evening. I have some pictures. In case some of you haven't been around the city lately, some of the work that they placed Our Public Works and Utilities Department, in the last 30 days, have completed approximately 300 work orders. And on top of that, we've cleaned 2,500 lineal feet of stormwater swales. We jetted approximately 150 feet of storm pipe. We also repaired the storm grates at Ritchie and Wilkins. I don't know if any of you travel that area on Walmart. They were sagging at least two inches, so you felt it every time you drove through that We're currently working on the kayak launch. We should be finished, I'm hoping, this week on that project. We, the brush pile, all the brush that's picked up yearly, has been ground. We have lots of mulch. If anybody needs mulch, we have plenty of mulch. We'll even deliver to you at your request, so if anybody's interested in that. The first three pictures that I, that I handed out to you is actually Wilkins, which is at the intersection of Wilkins and Ritchie. You can see everybody out there cleaning that storm swale. The next two pictures are on Old Post Road. There's two, there's two pictures there. I believe that's right in front of your house, Mr. Rowe. The, the next four pictures, or two pictures, is on Miles Boulevard. It's, it's on the east side of Miles. I know the mayor's been looking at that for quite a while, and we found that, back to that job. That was actually done by utilities and Public Works, they worked together on that.
I'll tell you what, you guys did a fabulous job, and we're gonna push the county in the match in the hat. Go run it.
The next two pictures, of course, were, was on Grand Boulevard by Famous Tink. And then, of course, the last picture is our, our Public Works group are doing the kayak Mr. Lupo brought up that we'll be doing a citywide cleanup the week of the 17th and the 24th. The first week, you'll be able to bring the items to our Public Works facility located behind City Hall. In the second week, at your, if the larger items can call in, we'll come out with machinery and pick those items up. We'll have someone standing by at the gates back there, because certain dumpsters will have to have them, certain items put in those, because we'll have to take some of that stuff to the calendar. The playground equipment also was supposed to arrive today, but they called late in the afternoon and they weren't be able, they weren't able to deliver it, so it'll be here tomorrow. So in the next few weeks, hopefully, you'll be seeing that going up at Waterfront Park as well. I know it's been a long, long road. We've done a lot of mowing throughout the city. With all the rain, it's, it's a never-ending project. Right of ways, we're continually trimming back and cleaning that as well. My crew's been working really hard, it's been hot.
Thank you, Chris. Good job. Ms. Martinez on grants, please?
I'd like to give you a brief update on the various grants that we've been awarded throughout the city in the various phases that were in with each one of those grants. So council will recall, we were awarded $100,000 in a FERDAP grant. We have so far, that's been mentioned earlier in the meeting, currently working on finishing up the kayak launch in the lagoon. As Mr. Hughes stated, that should be finished this week. We are also supposed to be receiving the playground equipment this week to be installed in Waterfront Park. That would be a new playground that will be installed just south of the pavilion. We also have a $100,000 matching grant from the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission for the Nick's Park Boat Ramp Repair. We are in the process right now of getting a submerged land survey. Once we finish that, we'll be able to go back to DEP and finalize the plans that we've already submitted, so we can move forward with construction. We just got today word from FDOT with our $300,000, $300,000 median beautification grant, that we received conditional approval on our plans to be able to start construction. And we recently submitted an application for the sidewalk project on River Gulf for our fair share allocation of the CDBG grant. Our fair share allocation for this upcoming year is $156,000. So we are waiting to hear back if that application was approved, so we can begin working on that project.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
One question. The River Gulf sidewalk, is that being intermingled with our hike and bike trail in New Port Ritchie? Are we following?
That's, that's the plan.
Okay.
Yes, sir. In conjunction with the hike and bike trail, and some of the work that, that Councilman Rowe has been involved in with respect to that, and Mr. Muse is involved in. Though, we recently are working out an interlocal agreement that will come to this council between Newport Ritchie and the county and us, with respect to completing additional work and studies to get us underneath the, the bridge at 19. I'll be bringing that back once it's approved to council. And for the best de resistance, I have Mr. Muse and the Building Department's report.
Thank you, sir. I would like to revisit the ticket issue just for a moment, if you will. The city of Waldo, I'm well aware of, I donated $200 to their coffers. It's quite an interesting little city. The Development Services is broken into three areas. One is zoning, one is Building Department, and the other is code compliance. Under code compliance for the past year now, that's, I have to go back that far with it. We've issued over 700 courtesy warnings, verbal, pardon me, verbal door hangers, phone calls, emails, or text messages. We have issued 226 notices of violation letters. We've issued 47 Pasco County Court citations. We caught a contractor re-roofing a building that, he didn't have a permit, he had underage workers working on the roof and he had no workman's compensation. So we, we, we had him cease that and we turned it over to the DVPR. Both of our code compliance officers are now certified stormwater inspectors, so we can keep our river clean. Our dumpster enclosures are virtually 100% done. I think we maybe have two or three left. And the grant program, as Mr. Lupo has mentioned, will be implemented by our code officers. Second is the Building Department. We've issued, this is the last 30 days, we issued approximately 45 building permits, including the Walmart remodeling. We've issued permits for the Avila Bay site work and the lift stations. We've issued working, I'm sorry, we are working on CRS Community Rating System recertification. This is due by the end of August. July 18th, we attended a local mitigation strategy meeting with Pasco County at the Government Center. We're getting ready for a public viewing of the new flood maps that are due on August 30th also. That's viewable at, at Hudson Library, 6 to 9:00 p.m. Thursday evening. We've, we managed a, in, in June of, June 28th, we managed a 10-year audit for FEMA. This is by Colas Brown, who was a Homeland Security Officer. We received a good review from it. We only had two items that needed resolved, and he had mentioned that we were quite knowledgeable of the NFIP. The, under zoning, we have a future land use map amendment scheduled for the, the middle of September for Washington Street. This is a planning and zoning issue. We have issued Avila Bay site permits, some of these things you've already heard about, but we've issued the site permits, the work has commenced. They are, they have sent us building plans, which we're reviewing. They have sent us building plans, which we're reviewing. They have not filed for a building permit yet, but I'm assuming they're going to do that. Snug Cove, pardon me, which is one hundred and eighty units, we had a DRC meeting with twelve department heads, and we reviewed their submittal, and they're gonna have to redo quite a few things about that. They're also gonna have to go back for a PUD, new PUD filing for PUD. There's some work to be done with that, but certainly is doable. Vacara Bay, we have a preliminary meeting August twenty-seventh with them. That's twenty-five townhomes, eighty condos, and four single-family units. Cody River, single-family residents, we met with the developers there. They want to develop seventy-eight single-family units. In addition to all of that, we have sent out the business tax renewals for five hundred and fifty-five businesses in the city. And of course, as Mr. Lupo had mentioned, today, we received approval for our islands, our traffic islands. DOT has approved them for construction. That's it. Next time, we'll stay busy.
Thank you, Bill. And that council and general public is an overview and an update of what your employees have been doing in order to continue to move council's directions and council's projects forward for the betterment of our community.
You done?
Yes, sir.
All right. Nice job. And Councilman Rowe and Jenny have a good idea. Okay, now, the good part. Thank you very much. Great job. I don't know what you do in there, Bill, but, and Mr. Lupo, I can tell, I told everybody, no one can dance with Mr. Lupo. Good job on Orange Grove Drive. Thank you. That's the last of the good jobs. Now, have we got a dredging meeting set up?
We are anticipating the completion of the work by Dewberry on the seagrass. Once that is submitted to the, and accepted by the Corps, we will then set up a major meeting with Dewberry, so that we can move forward with the actual dredging operation. So I can't move forward until I know that the Corps is accepting the work that Dewberry did with respect to the seagrass analysis, which was a mandate by them. We're stuck, again, please understand that there's nothing anyone can do, it is a mandate from them. This analysis could not begin until June, because that's when the initial stages of development of seagrasses. And that's what they want, so that's the direction we're moving in. As soon as it's completed, accepted, we'll have that meeting with Dewberry, and we'll go from there, sir.
Okay. Now, I heard final on Nyx Park, is that just the engineering of the two ramp, of the ramp, of the launch?
Yeah, as far, yes, it is.
Yes, we're in the process, right, and we submitted plans to them, and they asked us to do a submerged land survey, which we're in the process of doing right now. Once we submit that survey to them, then we can move forward with either approving the plans or amending the plans.
But the plans don't, do they consist of all the parking spaces can be moved and all this stuff he's told me?
This is for the ramp.
This is just the ramp.
Just the ramp. I do not want that to go through without this council approving.
I'm sorry?
The re-modeling, if you will, of Nyx Park.
No, we're speaking specifically to the ramp. Once that is approved, we will come back to council with the redesign of the parking configuration of the park itself. Mr. Muse has been looking at that almost since the day he arrived here, jumping up and down and on again to try and improve it. But once that is there, we'll come back with that. Because they almost, it's a symbiotic relationship between, although it would appear, between the ramps and the parking. We'll be back to council for that.
Remember, these people out here pay our bills.
They certainly do.
And you're talking about, don't get rid of any parking places in Nyx Park. We're finally gonna be able to recoup some of our two hundred thousand-ish dollars we've spent over the years.
That's a decision that this council will make with respect to the overall beauty of the park, the utilization of the park, the, what other parking places survive. That comes back to this council. Council makes that decision. We don't move independently of council.
All right. So we are gonna wait for the Dewberry until?
As soon as we hear from the acceptance of the information from Dewberry to the Corps, which has been submitted to them, we'll come back to council.
If I might, Mayor, real quick, a discussion today I had with Curtis Franklin at the county. I guess we're approaching the project deadline, so he's gonna be calling, warning you that we do need to move quick.
Can we streetscape? Start using some of the money on streetscape?
I'm not following you, sir.
We said we're meet the deadlines.
There are several different options that we have. We believe that we'll be well within the parameters of the CRA funding, so we're not, of the Restore Act funding. We think we'll meet those parameters. If not, there are certainly areas that we can, in order to complete our obligation. Remember, we have almost four hundred thousand dollars invested in the initial phase, and we're still looking for six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars worth of dredging operations, which we're budgeting for. So we will, in fact, meet the deadlines. There's no question in my mind about that.
Back to the dog issue.
Yes, sir.
Mike was one of the three or four policemen that were chasing four pit bulls. I don't know if the public's familiar with this. You got three, right?
No, sir, we've actually got the fourth one as well. It was captured, I believe, a day or two later.
Well, it didn't have to be captured a day or two later, because I called them. Somebody put it on my front porch. And I called our dispatch, which was quite rude, and said, "We're sorry, we can do nothing for you." Now, I didn't mind. I'm from Oklahoma, I can go shoot it, do it. But we need, I'm not gonna shoot it.
Okay.
And I didn't. But that, those dogs were vicious, I think. I know it ate one of my neighbor's dogs.
Yes, sir, they absolutely needed to be.
And I can't believe that this, I didn't care. But if it was a lady that was alone, it was totally inappropriate, totally inappropriate response from them. What do I do with it? Well, it's on your property, so it's yours. Does that sound appropriate?
No, sir, it was that night that you called?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go back and look and see, see if I can find that call.
Review the records, please, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Do you know about what time it was, sir?
What time?
That doesn't make any difference.
Ten, eleven-ish.
Review the records. And by the way, that was part of the, of the funding that you just approved at the last meeting with respect to those dogs.
My point exactly. What do they do? After hours, we just fend for ourselves?
No, sir. They came to pick up the dogs, and they took the dogs.
What about at eleven o'clock, when it's in my?
They will come.
Well, our dispatchers don't know.
Well, that's something we're gonna resolve, sir.
Okay. So we got that part resolved. As long as I'm at it, I'll keep ranting. Jocelyn, did you ever send that email back out for Quist and Old Post? And you CC'd Jack Mariano?
No, no, you did send that memo out, but Mr. Hughes has been working directly with them at the county with respect to dredging, that material from the Quist.
Yeah, they did a great job. Now the county's turn to...
And we're dealing directly with them.
Call Jack, he's very much, he knows what's going on. I've showed it to him ten times. He's for it, and he doesn't want that trailer park to flood.
We've sent the email, and we're working with Jack.
CC me on all of it.
We sent the email that you requested, and our man is working with their people to do it.
Are they doing anything?
Not yet.
Well, that's what it is. Well, that we got rid of the pit bulls, and that, and, I know this is gonna make Jim sigh, but, you know, the river is getting more and more full, and I'm getting more and more complaints from people that live on the river, that their docks are getting, their floating ramps are getting swamped. Is there not a way we can put some red light cameras on there? If they're pushing water, they got FL signs, and we don't have to have an officer out there all at it. You can see in a no wake zone when there's wake.
I think that would be a grander issue that the council would have to review and determine similarly to the red light cameras themselves.
Do any of y'all have any thoughts about, I know one at Sand Pebble lost a ten thousand dollar dog. I don't know, you wanna give that to Jim, or do you care?
If I can say, trying to help council a little bit, you're talking about chicken and the egg. You're talking about, about putting up signs with nothing to enforce what may happen. We have a small flatboat. It's part of some of the discussions about what we can and can't do. If council wants to come up with some kind of mechanism, we'll be more than happy to listen, we'll be more than happy to discuss it during the budget process, because that's what it's gonna take.
You know, Jim, that sounds to me like this could be a jurisdictional problem. You're out in, you're talking about putting up red light cameras for speeders out in the water, in the water. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that would have to be researched. I think it would have to be researched, because I don't know that we have any authority to do that out there. So I think the first thing to do is to see if there's authority, if...
Mike, can we give a ticket on?
Jim might already know that.
Yeah, what can I comment on that? Since I was the first person in a major city in the state to recommend red light cameras here, okay, when it was just the Attorney General Charlie Crist that had recommended, in his opinion, thought perhaps it would pass muster. I don't think you can have red light, you know, technology to get speeders on a boat, okay, for the lack of something, without state legislation, because you wanna do is just look at something, and this is a whole, that'll go to the Supreme Court of Florida, I can assure you of that, you understand me? So I don't think I need to do much research to think that I can just put a camera out there, and if you see a wave or something, and you wanna consider that going too fast, we're gonna be able to issue uniform boating citations, okay? I think I've gone through some members, let me finish. If we could just uniform citations. So the bottom line is, you know, we have every ability as a city to issue uniform boating citations, okay? Which carry a lot more weight than a go complaint, if you understand what I mean? And I think you know that, right? And the only issue is, Mr. Lupo's issue is, you wanna put Marine Patrol out there, you can't. I don't need to research that, I've already done that. And I think the officers know they could issue uniform boating citations, just like Florida Fish and Wildlife. Just a matter of money. You wanna put someone out there, it's just a matter of money.
I don't wanna put any money out. You're saying that there is no possible way that we could take a picture of a guy coming in at thirty miles an hour, throwing a wake, and say that's proof positive he is not in a no wake zone?
Well, I would defer to the police, 'cause they can go to Florida Fish and Wildlife and see if they're gonna accept that as a complaint over there. It's kinda hard to explain, these are uniform fish and wildlife complaints. Do you have any reason to believe that'd be acceptable?
Yes, sir, and indeed, you're right, we can issue uniform citations, however, when we issue a uniform citation, it has to go to the operator of the vessel. Similarly, if we issue a uniform traffic citation, it has to go to the operator of a vehicle, a car. I think one of the problems you would have in what you're looking at, too, is the technological aspect of it. I'm not a techie, so I can't say absolute, but being able to capture the information, not to mention, have it auto-capture similar to the red light cameras, what they do, otherwise you're gonna have to have somebody sit there reviewing twenty-four hours a day a video to determine what's individual violations, as opposed to just segments of it. Plus, then you're gonna have angles of the camera to the registration numbers on the vessel, and a lot of issues like that. Additionally, additionally, it also doesn't give you environmental factors that come into play. You know, obviously, every vessel is different. Some vessels will produce a little bit more, a little bit more wake at slower speeds than what others were. If there's wind or currents that are pushing, you might have to give it a little bit additional power to maintain your steerage, which may produce that additional wake from a picture or video that may not give you that information.
Well, can you look into it? Because even if you had an officer on, what's that road, the River Road?
Sunset Boulevard.
Sunset. If you had one on Sunset that took a picture and observed it, take a picture, you've observed it, you don't have to stop them in the middle of the river and cause a big problem. These people go through at, it's disturbing, and you must have your dock get busted, yeah, you're ways off. But Sand Pebble and those docks in Harbor Isles, they have, they get a lot of damage, and not just the docks, the seawalls undermine, the ripraps undermine, and it's gonna get worse, so we just, to start, okay?
Well, hold on, based on that, can we contact FWC and Pasco County and ask for increased patrol, because we're having an issue? I mean, once there's, once people see them, they'll be wary about racing down the river, and it won't cost us anything, Mayor, for them to come out and do that. So if we could ask them to increase, you know, their presence on the river?
It'll be done, that will be done the first thing in the morning, sir.
Good idea, Will, but I'm just saying.
And also, I think that in the very near future, particularly either during this budget cycle or after this budget cycle, depending upon how it works, I think the issue of Marine Patrol may be something you all might wanna discuss. Because we had a very effective Marine Patrol operation with one small boat and one individual, Gene used to do a heck of a job, if you all remember, and we didn't have a lot of those problems.
And get another bicycle-certified officer for the waterfront district.
Yes, sir, and I know just the bicycle.
Because Barcello was our only certified officer for bicycle, and we could have somebody else down there.
You have to have a certification around.
They do have to have a certification.
Yes, sir.
You know, we had fish and wildlife over there at American Marina, and they kept their couple boats over there. They disappeared. I have not seen them there in months. So maybe they moved them out of there, I don't know what's going on, but I don't see them now as frequently as I had.
I was under the impression, from what I heard from them the last time I talked to them, they work zones. So yes, you will see them for a while, then they move to another area, then they move to another area, so they have probably moved.
But the county can help us with that as well.
Be nice to have them back.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, there's so many government, Coast Guard, Fish and Wildlife, Pasco County, does New Port Ritchie have a boat out?
Yes, they do.
There, I mean, we have enough people on the water, I think. We don't need to spend money, but we need to do something, so this is a good start.
We'll make a call in the morning, sir.
Right. I'm almost finished. Then we can adjourn. I'm, I'm a little, we got two new vehicles for the police, and that total account now, how many vehicles do we have?
We have two, I'm sorry. We just acquired two new vehicles out of this year's budget. We acquired two HumV's at a minimal cost to augment various operations, but obviously they are not a day-to-day vehicle, a utilization vehicle. We are acquiring two vehicles from the city of Brooksville to help retire some of the dead weight, and we'll be coming to you to discuss what our total count is during the budget process, and what our needs as projected by the Police Department will be, and what my recommendation will be with respect to that issue. So we'll be coming to you very shortly with all of that information, so the council can make a decision on the budget with respect to the needs of that department.
So, but you don't have a, we don't know how many police departments.
Yeah, we do. We know how many, and what I'm trying to say is, rather than get into that now, which is a budget issue, and we can wait during the budget process, it'll be very clear. We'll give you the nomenclature on the cars, their mileage, what they're worth, what they're not worth, and what we're attempting their mileage, what they're worth, what they're not worth, and what we're attempting to do. I believe the total number is somewhere between ten and twelve, or fourteen. I, I don't honestly remember off the top of my head, so I would rather just wait till we get into the budget process where, where it makes a lot more sense, when you can add up apples and oranges and make determinations to our, to the actual needs as presented by the Police Department and the administration.
Okay.
We may not agree, I'm talking about the Police Department and, 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 uh, during the budget process, but then that comes to council, council make its mind up, and we'll go forward.
Okay. Now, I just, one last comment, I have my first gun I ever got. So, that's, I have the first gun that I ever got, it still shoots and it's good. We've updated, last year we updated weapons, now we're, what are our weapons or we're wearing out?
The we, yeah. I assure you, sir, that the weapon that you first purchased, that you have, is most likely usable, but it does not go through what our, our weapons go through. They are, uh, officers must go out, they must recertify, they must ensure, we have an armorer who makes sure that they're in decent condition, and whenever we have an opportunity to update, we do. We have taken advantage of, of our, of, uh, Brooksville's misfortune, we have made substantial purchases at an extremely reduced price from, uh, the city of Brooksville, since they're doing away with their department. And we're trying to save money as best we can, but we must ensure the equipment that our officers have and is, is the best that this city can possibly afford. Um, and I agree with you, I probably have my original pistol, but I assure you, it's never been used like the one that Mike is carrying right now.
Okay, I'll just leave you with this, my father used to say, you can go broke saving money.
True.
Okay.
Absolutely true.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, it has come to my attention that we haven't been representing ourselves well at the MPO, and apparently you haven't been able to do that, and I know that everybody else is working, so, um, I'd like to volunteer to go and represent Port Ritchie at the MPO.
I would like you to do that, I, I want, I've been sick two times and I didn't get there. The prob, and, and would you go with me? I want to be there because I, I've started this hiking bike, after that, you can have it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So, if you'll keep, and Mabel Reisner will send you eight hundred emails, change the dates, change the times, et cetera, so.
Okay.
But again, are you on that, uh, board, uh, on that email process?
I think I am, I tried to get on it the last time.
Why don't you tell them that we made this decision and after the hiking bike tour, you'll be full-time?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, is this transparent enough? Anyone to talk about it?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, second reading ordinance, residential maintenance standards. Mr. Matthew.
This is the second and final reading of ordinance number eighteen dash six-six-three, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, mending chapter fourteen of the Port Ritchie Code by adding a new article entitled, Article Six, entitled Minimum Standards for Residential Dwellings, providing for penalties and fines, severability in an effective date, looking for a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance eighteen dash six-six-three. Second.
Motion in a second. Would the public, any discussion?
No.
Would the public like to speak to this? Bring it back to council, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Passes four-one. Okay, we're now into the purchase of Census FlexNet system upgrade.
Census, right, meter reading system.
What's that?
For City Council's consideration is an upgrade to the Census meter reading system. The Census analysis services will provide a tighter integration into the city's existing billing software. The upgrade will also include a customer portal that will allow customers to track their water usage. This upgrade will enhance the functionality of the Census system as well as eliminate the need for an onsite server. The total cost of this upgrade is sixty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Funds for this purchase will be derived from the utility fund. Historically, when the Census meter system was first purchased, the software required a local server here at City Hall. A couple of years ago, the server was hacked, and I think many of you will remember that. The hackers made extortion threats to crash our system and delete files, even the FBI was involved in that investigation. The new system will be cloud-based and will not need a local server. Our present server needs to be replaced due to consistent malfunctions. We estimate that, that savings, uh, will be approximately seven, um, to seventy-five-hundred dollars a year in just maintenance alone on that server, let alone the necessity, uh, of, of protecting the information from potential hacking, which everyone is aware of today. So, we would certainly, uh, request the motions to approve the purchase of the Census flat neck system to upgrade an amount of sixty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty cents.
I have a question for you right off the bat. What, what is, what is the cost of a server? I know we have to get rid of the one we have, what's the cost of the server?
Seventy thousand dollars.
For that, so it's seventy, and I noticed that the web hosting and is about ten, almost ten thousand dollars a year. So, I mean, it's not really a sixty thousand dollar purchase, it's, it's a hundred thousand dollar purchase over the next five years, because we have ten thousand dollars a year in hosting, right?
And what, Noel?
There's.
But in lieu, we also spend almost five thousand dollars a year in just maintenance for the Census software that we currently have.
That answers my question.
Okay.
I'm lost in, uh, old guy IT problems. Would you tell me what you got?
Well, there's, there's, there's cost to maintain the server and, and the web hosting and all these things, which runs about ten thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
Little bit less, actually, nine thousand, uh, and change, um, but what Aaron was saying that costs us almost five thousand dollars a year to maintain the one we had, plus our initial layout would be closer to seventy thousand dollars. So, it's, it's not that much, and you've got quite an upgrade from what I, what I've read.
Tremendous difference.
Yeah, yeah.
Mary Beth, would you like?
I'm in the cloud now. I'm in the cloud and I, I'm just a private resident. Why aren't we there?
All right, Mary Beth, you come to the podium and say your name and address.
She hasn't done well.
Mary Beth McMullen, four-six-eight-two Eptid Lane. Um, why aren't we in the cloud now? I pay, I pay for that service every year.
We are, we are attempting to get to the cloud, Mary Beth.
Okay.
We're bringing it.
Because I mean, it's pretty simple, I just had my IT guy come to the house and put me on the cloud.
But we have to take down what we have from an onboard server to get to the cloud, so it's a whole different.
I just upgraded my software, I mean, I just upgraded it.
We, we cannot do that. We are, the city is moving forward as quickly as it can from a, a hard-based, at one point in time, we had six or seven servers back there, if you can believe, no, we had more than that, we had ten or twelve back there, if you can believe that.
So, you're on what I call the tower, you're on the tower system right now, is that what you're doing?
We're going from it, we're getting off of it.
That's what I have.
So, yeah, well, we're getting from that, we're going right straight to the cloud.
Okay.
So, so the increased benefits outweigh the cost difference?
Absolutely.
Because we have a lot more.
The benefits far outweigh the cost.
Far outweigh the cost, the additional cost doesn't seem like it's that much.
Right.
Okay. How long does it last?
Lasts forever.
Okay.
The cloud.
I have a motion in a second.
Mayor, I'd like to go back to the hacking issue. I do not recall being informed about any of this.
Years ago, I wasn't.
Can I, yeah, can I, I'll address that, I think it sheds some light on that, you want to just, this might help, Councilor. This historical section I wrote, uh, when I first took over as this city manager two years ago, I guess June of two thousand sixteen, this was a serious problem that had been going on for like eight or nine months, I didn't know about it. That's when we had the two, let me give you the big picture here. Yeah, so what happened was, someone hacked the system, I think about eight or nine months before that, is that about right? They had hacked the system, it was a problem, held us hostage, and in other words, say, you pay us so much money, we're, we're gonna, you know, blow your system out, you won't know the past billing records, okay, we wouldn't have owed us money or anything like that, that had been going on. So, I did a ton of homework, this is the contract here, and so this is what I can tell you, so I, this is what, how I learned it. At that point in time, we had about twenty-three servers here, okay, we were server happy, and we're too small a city, in my opinion, and I did a lot of research on this, to have an IT department of people here doing proprietary software, proprietary hardware and software is, your general motors, you could do that, but we're way too small, because once that person leaves, we can't fix it, we're having problems with that still, we're down about four servers now, okay, and we use an outside service to do this, and it's substantially cheaper, one person left and the other person quits, so, you know, we got rid of both of them, we're saving a tremendous amount of money, but what happened here was, during this, what I call proprietary server nonsense that had been going on here for three or four years, I'll publicly state that, this was foolish. They had gotten into this, when it was originally sold to us, the Census thing, it was too expensive to go into the cloud then, okay, when we purchased this, so we, we bought it as hardware here, but it was subject to attack at any time. This seventy thousand, you have no choice, it's gonna put it in the cloud, and they're gonna hack us again, okay, and they're constantly battling out, uh, you know, trying to get into our servers and everything, steal that, that's why we're down now, everything in the city, we're down to four of these, okay, and I don't, I don't think we can get any less, but notwithstanding the substantial amount of money for that servers that were back there for those, but maintaining them and everything was just kind of useless, we didn't need all of this. So, what, the answer is, I, I was more surprised than anybody, you know what I mean, when it came on, we were just holding, you know, keeping down the fort here, and I first, I, when Mr. Lupo took over, I said, Mr. Lupo, you're gonna have to spend this money, he started saving the money in the water department, that's where this is coming out, in the water department, to do this, so, I was more surprised, I didn't hear anything of it, no, there's records of that here and everything, yeah, so I don't know if that helps you at all.
So, this happened before even you came on?
Before, yeah, twenty sixteen, probably eight or nine months earlier.
My question here is, why was council not brought into this when it happened? This is, I thought maybe I was overreacting, but as I talked to a lot of the people in town who had their data stolen and, according to this, held hostage, no one was notified, no warning went out, that's not the way people do things when they're hacked into, it's not our fault it got hacked into, these people do this all the time. Where we failed was notifying our clients that their data was out there and that they needed to be proactive in watching their own accounts. I don't know what could have come from this, I don't really know if anything came from it, but the fact that that data was out there and this city did not bring it to council and no warning was given to our utility customers is unacceptable.
Can I comment on that? The only data, my understanding, is the past billing history of customers, no, no payment data, I'd asked that of Census, the, no, no credit card numbers, just past billing data, so how many gallons you used last month, how much money you owe us, it's the only data that was taken. Remember, that's a problem to the city, if they wipe us out on Monday, might not seem like a lot, but we're a three and a half million dollar budget there, you take one cycle of one twelfth of that, we don't know who owes us money for that month, it's a serious problem, that's the only data, that's, because I went through those questions.
If, and it was Mr. Hughes and Mr. LeCarré, two of the individuals who spent days and hours and, uh, as I understand it, based on the history that I've learned, putting the system back together again, and this will preclude that, but Mr. Rowe, in my opinion, prior to Mr. Matthew being an interim city manager or city manager, this city hemorrhaged money, it lost money by the bucket load, that's, that is, that stopped when that gentleman came onboard and it's gonna continue to stop while I'm here, but you are a hundred percent correct, this city hemorrhaged, it didn't bleed money, it hemorrhaged it. This is, this is one effort, along with some of the changes that are going to be coming to you in this coming budget process, where we're looking to save money as best as possible by streamlining systems, and this will give, not only streamline our system, but it'll give every one of our citizens a tremendous ability to regulate their own information and their own usage.
My, my complaint here is, you know, the money is definitely gone and we can't bring that back. My complaint here is that council, and I was here then, this is two years ago, or longer, a little longer, but I was here then, I heard nothing of this. Why? Why did this not come to council? Jocelyn, you were here then, was this under Tom O'Neill's time?
You know, from what I remember of that, it was something that took place over a very long period of time, where we were losing data and not really even knowing why, so I couldn't even tell you a beginning date of when it started, to be honest, because I think it was something that kind of, was it aggregated over time, so I, I couldn't give you a specific start date, maybe, I don't know, Sal, could you provide more information about when you think?
What I'm understanding there, correct me, uh, there were no personal things, just water uses?
Yes.
In other words?
But, but the point Mr. Rowe's trying to make is that we should have been made aware.
Council is council, those kind of things, and if it went to the FBI, this is a big deal, folks, this wasn't just, uh, somebody playing with this thing, we sent it to the FBI. This council, or the council that was in place at the time, should have been notified and it should have been discussed right then and there, so that we were on top of it and as a whole, but we were left out, because I don't remember ever hearing about this, and from what I'm gathering right now, we didn't hear about it. But Jim, thank you for your work on it, because, uh, it definitely had to be handled, it just irritates me that we're, you know, occasionally just left out, in left field on things of this magnitude, it's just mind-boggling, so. It's done, uh, let's go, Bob?
Any other thoughts on this? I have one quickie, since you guys know how I am on smart meters, these are not, these are not nearly, there's very, very, very little danger or studies on them, and, but my major concern is, Chris, is there a way to compare how these smart meters are, I don't know how I can use how many gallons you guys say I am, but could, if I, if I said, I'm a citizen, I don't think I'm using as much, can you check this meter for accuracy? Can we do that?
Yes, we have the equipment to come out and do a meter field test, Sal can back me up on this, we do several a month, if people call in and complain thinking they have high usage, our water utility crewman will go out and do a meter field test and make sure it's accurate.
What do you check it against? Will you check my meter against a?
We use equipment to test how many gallons of water are going through that meter, so if it matches up to the amount of gallons that go through your meter and that meter that we're using, it's accurate.
Okay, there you go, put me on the list.
Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not my place, but this has the same software in it now going forward that Newport Ritchie has, the customers now, and I presume this is gonna reduce high bill complaints, now are gonna be able to look at their water usage hourly.
Correct, they can go online.
They can go online and do that now with this.
Correct.
So, now, now, Mr. Mayor, I think in high, high water complaints, things come up, it's like all of a sudden, when did it happen, and you, you could say, well, you know, you used ten times more water on July fourth, oh, that's right, you know, I mean, we left the water on, that kind of stuff, so, this new program, it's gotta cut that a lot.
Correct, I mean, the customer will be able to access that information, it'd be reduced on calls here.
I frankly think my neighbors are still on my wall. I have a motion.
Motion to approve the sinus meter reading system?
Exactly. Would the public like to speak to this? Yes, ma'am?
Sanders Spauldy, eighty-six, twelve Green Street, hello, no-brainer.
That's not good.
No-brainer here, water department makes the money, give them whatever they need, they do a great job, I'm gonna leave. I'm going to leave you with that. Thank you.
Not a problem. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Old business, beautiful old business.
I know, but we've done such a wonderful job this evening that there is no old business to bring up right now.
There isn't any why, I have some. I'm going to pass this. I'm sorry, guys, we're not doing bad. Phyllis and I used to be here at one AM.
That very thought just crossed my mind, that the mayor and I go back to the year of the flood, for goodness sakes. And we were here, one meeting, Dale, if you remember, we were here until four in the morning. And I sit down here, and I listen to some of the people. They get up and talk, ask questions, and blah, blah. And it's a wonderful meeting, and nobody is attacking each other, and there's no screaming from the, from the audience. And it's such a pleasure, because we had all but, you know, bows and arrows and everything thrown at us. So, gosh, council, you're pretty good.
We're having a good time finding that you do good things.
Thank you.
You guys are going to have to share. He's an attorney, anyway. Captain, I guess this is for the police department. The way we're interpreting this law, if, I went over to Phyllis's, she asked me for a drink, and I had brought a backpack, and I walked in, and I'm staying. And she could call you and say, "What, do you have any clothes here?" "No." "You getting your mail here?" "Yeah, well, I've already changed that to Phyllis's house." So there's nothing you can do. And I think you're over-reading it. I don't know. But if you check out this, there's a guy on Bay Boulevard, do you know who he is? He's trying to sell his house. These bums will just come off the street. He hasn't got enough, whatever, to kick him out, or maybe he can't. He was told by one of the police officers that if he called nine-one-one one more time, he was going to be arrested. So his realtor came up with this. And I don't see any other way. I, I mean, it can't not be that I could just go, change my address, put my mail, send my mail to Bill, go to his house, sit down, and stay for a month, until he spent five hundred dollars to get me out. Any thoughts?
The gentleman you're speaking of, I've personally been out there and spoken with him. The circumstances that, in the manner that they've been presented to me, give rise that the person who's been staying there was allowed to stay there for a period of time, sufficient enough to appear in nature to have established residence that he was now living near. I understand.
Speak a little higher.
I'm sorry. I understand the premise to which you're speaking of, a transient guest. For example, a family member comes from out of state and is living out of this suitcase while they're there, that's a different circumstance. But the circumstances of this incident, and I don't want to speak too much of that particular gentleman's thing, you know, give rise that the person has established residence. I've personally, as well as other officers, have given him instructions of the method to go through the courthouse to proceed with proceedings that way.
Captain, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Can we stop, can you stop where you're at? And I don't, I don't mean to be disrespectful, Mayor, and I really don't want to step on your questions. But this really, this question really belongs in a written format submitted to Captain, to myself or the Captain, or the chief of police. There are special cases involving this individual, and I know you're talking in generalities, but this document talks to a specific individual, and I think this should be resolved differently. I'm more than, more than happy to get, to sit with you and the city attorney and with the chief of police and the captain to help resolve this issue. But I don't believe it really belongs at this, at this form.
All right, we'll leave that part of it out. The other part of my complaint is, when you trespass, like I've trespassed this person in the past, the next time she came, we can't find the trespasser. That was, that was the first thing. This person came back. The officer that answered the call went down, talked to the mother of the daughter, and came back and said, the question, as I perceive it was said, I wasn't down there. Would you, is there any way you would ever want this person in your house? And the mother said, "Well, if she was right," but she's not right, and she is nuts. So with that information, we were told she can't be trespassed. And the whole point I'm bringing here is, the police are working for us. These guys pay you, not these tramps that walk in your house or whatever, walk over us. And it seems like every time I get a complaint, it's because the police don't do nothing, or they send you out the door. So that's all I have to say.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.